Is a 1.2% increase. Cable franchising fees, God knows. There was a lot of people sitting at home. Last year, we were recognizing there was cord cutting. Now, everybody's sitting at home watching TV and buying movies, right? So that's up a little bit. So the decrease of 5,000 that we budgeted last year is now back up to another 5,000. So we're back to 50,000. Overall, our revenues are 3 million, basically rounded, 3.3 million dollars. When you compare it to 2019, it's a 1% decrease. You back out the program, open space grant funding, and sale of equipment, some one-time stuff that you don't really want in there to compare. And our difference from actual 2019 to the budget for 2021 is $4,000. So it's basically totally flat. Expense side, which I said is pretty much set, 23 employees. We've got one open position in the police department. We've done a great job of getting that staffed up. The total 24 represents no change year over year. And the employees are going to get a 2% general increase in the salaries, which is in line with the county and the other towns. So that doesn't represent, you know, we can afford that and they should be rewarded for the good work that they do. Trash and waste removal is another large expense, 372,000. That's actually up 13%. We're in year three of five with Hughes, and it's up for such an amount because now the county increased their tipping fee. So when we dump all that trash at the dump, they're charging us a lot more. One of the other expenses that keeps going up is stormwater management related to the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, MPDES, thank you, and the watershed implementation plan. You know, this is all the clean water runoff, rain tax information, you know, all the stuff, the EPA, the state-funded, unfunded mandated cost. You want to go back in time, early in 2011 to 2015, the costs were 26 to $42,000. 2021, it'll be $167,000. So it's just costs that the state and the feds are putting down on us. I guess the other big item on the general fund is the insurance costs continue to go up for all of our employees. You know, I think that's just what every business is incurring. So, but that's something we have to monitor. So the general fund, you know, that's the overview of that. The water fund, no increase in rates. Our rates appear to be in line with what the other Carroll County towns are. We had increased rates for several years in order to get our system to meet its obligations, and I think we're about there. Our appropriation permit expires, expired? Are we renewed? We're renewed for another?
I believe it's 2027, I believe.
And we're still at 600, what are, what's the number of gallons?
680,000.
680,000 per Kevin Hand, who's our superintendent of public work, sitting there in the front row. So that's, that's all good. I mean, our average usage is, what, 350? So.
450 now.
Because everybody's home. But, you know, it has been lower. Let's see, what else on the water side? Our new pipe continues to pay dividends. And the testing equipment that we have, we can identify water leaks really quickly, and we're eliminating a lot of waste as a result. We've got a new supplier for chemicals, and that's the second year of that contract. That saves us some bucks. Our solar array up at the north end of town saved us money on the utility side. So the water fund is looking much more sustainable than it did. On the bonding debt side, we have a paving bond that was let in 2013. So we're in year eight of 15 on that. That was originally 500,000. Our streetlights, which are still in process on Main Street, that was a bond for 651,000, year two of 15 on that bond. The north side water tower, hard to believe, that was 723,000 to build that thing in '01. And we're in next year, and we're paying it off, and it'll be gone. But don't worry, we'll have something else to replace it. The water system is very expensive. The water line that we put on Main Street that I just referenced, 2.9 million, that we, it's hard to believe that we did that in '15, and we're already in year five of a 20-year bond. But it has a 50-year amortization on it because that other water pipe lasted for 85 years, so we hope we get the same thing with the new pipe. I would say overall, our forecast, you know, has changed from positive to totally uncertain. Like I said, residential sales on the property tax side, we look fine. Income taxes, a total question mark. Highway user revenue, money, question mark. Water revenue, as, you know, people are home and using it, I think our system is good. Expenses are always a challenge, but they're analyzed pretty carefully. Overall, you know, we're a reflection of the economy, and right now, since the economy is uncertain, our outlook's uncertain. And if we need to adjust something as we go, and we find we're getting more of an impact than we thought, then we'll adjust on the fly. But I don't anticipate having to cut employees or do anything drastic. We'll tighten our belt like, you know, you guys do at home and get through it, just like we did from 2008 to 2010. Not to run long, but the capital improvement plan, there's only one thing that I'm thinking about changing tonight or probably want to change. But there's not a lot to the expenditures for next year. Two police cars. There's a Nevin rule for 10 years, and a couple of them are at the end of their useful life, and I've seen them, and they are. So they're going to get upgraded. Instead of those Chevys, we're going to get decent-looking SUVs so that the weather doesn't slow them down, and they're much more of a visible presence when they're out and about in the community. We've got a maintenance truck. Main Street revitalization continues, which is finishing up the streetlights. We have road repairs, which is anything that we pay to pave in excess of what we get in highway user revenue. And then the North Hillcrest water tower is coming down, and we budgeted 60 for that, but it looks like it's going to come in lighter than 60. But the Hillcrest water tower has served its useful life, and it's, we can't justify spending the amount of money we would have to spend to improve it when it only produces 100.
It holds 100,000 down.
Yeah.
Plus 1.2 million dollars to tenant and sandblast it. And we would have to get a property from our neighbors' rights of entry to put the tenant. We don't even earn enough property to do it.
So I hope you heard that at home, but 1.2 million dollars for 100,000 gallon tank doesn't work when you have 500,000 sitting at Panther and another 400,000 sitting up at the north end at Walmart. And so we have plenty of water in the air that produces the pressure and provides the inventory that we need. So the only change that I gave a lot of thought to is some, we've still got some 1936 pipe that, with rates low and possibly doing all that work at one time, if we do that work next year, bond that work, then the bond that's paying off on the water tower, we just, the new bond debt service will be replaced by this new bond. And rates are through the floor, so we might as well take advantage of that. So that would probably be one amendment that I want to make, but that would be 840,000 dollars, and it would be a 20-year bond or longer. We'll do a term of 20 years, but try to maybe get an amortization period that's longer. Questions? Anybody up here? Anybody out there? I ran through it quick.
Did you want to raise your hand a second?
Yep, I did. Water rates staying the same. All right. So seeing no comment, we did talk about it during our last council meeting by Zoom, so I'll close the public hearing, seeing no comments. So we'll move right into the agenda for the council meeting, and we'll rise for opening prayer and a moment of silence, followed by the pledge. And I just thought a moment of silence with everything that, all the unrest that's going on, plus the uncertainty caused by the virus, that a moment of silence was appropriate to pray in any manner that we chose that was appropriate in the hopes that people act rationally and that our elected leaders move us forward to an open society again. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're, it's good to be back in person and not by conference call. And we did take some steps to ensure that we have social distancing. I don't know whether you can see that on TV or not, but if you're sitting close together, it's because you're from the same family. The state and local buildings and facilities with an expected occupancy of more than 10 people shall promptly conspicuously post on the building or facility a copy of the MDH Maryland-Bathley Health Department recommendations for social distancing and provide all occupants and attendees with the capability to wash their hands, which we've done. A copy, excuse me, a copy of this order shall be made available to all occupants or attendees at any state or local building. And we have it posted right on the front door. We've mandated social distancing. We've tried our best, as you can see. And we provided gloves and hand sanitizers at the table where you sign in if anybody wanted to use it. And we wiped down all, disinfected and disinfected it all surfaces, and all the chairs in this place were cleaned over the weekend. And I saw them in here last night. It smelled like a hospital. They were clean in a way. So, you know, it's good to be back in person with the right steps being taken. Tammy normally calls the roll, but she's sitting out in the corner, so I'll just note that everybody's here tonight, and it's good to see you all. But minute approvals from the council meeting on May 12th. Thank you, Wayne. Second by Dave. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right. Tammy Ledley, Town Manager. Staff report and Main Street revitalization report.
For our downtown revitalization project, CJ Miller crews continue to travel south on the southbound lane. Old sidewalks have been removed from the Northern Railway tracks to just south of Sullivan Lane, and most of the curb and gutter has been poured and installed. North of 482, curvy sidewalk has been poured except at 1424 Main Street, where they are currently rebuilding the retaining wall. The reconstruction of the retaining wall at 1420 is complete. Landscaping is scheduled to be planted in the area, in that same area during the last week of June. So Section 3, which consists of 482 to the Northern Railway tracks, should be completed by the end of June, except for a small area sidewalk where Verizon's working on repairs. It's the area where there's a little bit of asphalt. As crews were preparing for the new sidewalk on the southwest corner of 482 and Route 30, they discovered an abandoned fuel tank by 1388 North Main Street. State Highway has contacted MDE to begin the removal process. However, MDE currently has a 30-day waitlist for scheduling inspections. So CJ Miller is going to bypass this section for now and return once the area has been cleared. BG&E has connected power to the third photocell equipment box located by Gil Avenue, which provides power to the lamppost in the downtown area. State Highway plans to inspect the box before it's turned on. Hopefully, the lamppost will be lit by next week. And as the mayor said earlier, Jim Rourke continues to stay up to date on available federal, state, and county funding and sharing it with our small businesses. Outdoor seating is now permitted for restaurants with limitations. Residents continue to support our local businesses, and now they can also patronize other retail establishments in town. And I know my staff report looks short, but we've been spending a lot of time on different projects that we can't exactly share the details with everyone yet. But our current commercial and residential projects continue to move forward. Councilmember Painter will discuss the business that presented our concept plan at our main planning and zoning commission meeting. And we are also seeing new prospects who are interested in our town. So things continue to move forward for us, which is good. For our finance department, the auditors will be on site this week for interim testing. And as I discussed before, our first quarter water billing due date was extended to May 15. Currently, we have an outstanding balance of over 13,000. Normally, we would have an unpaid balance of approximately 3,000 at this time. The executive order prohibiting shut-offs of utilities has been extended to July 1st, 2020. And hopefully, everybody saw that the town newsletter was mailed out at the end of May, so it should have been already in everybody's mailbox. And we have extra copies at Town Hall if anybody would like one. And there's also a full color edition on our website under helpful links and documents. And the 2020 census online, phone, and mailed self-responses will continue to be counted through October 31st. The scheduled timeframe for census takers to interview households in person for those that have not responded is August 11th through October 31st. The deadline to deliver the final data to the president is April 30th, 2021, and the states will receive their counts by July 31st, 2021. So we encourage everyone to please complete their 2020 census so everybody will.
Thank you. Any questions for Tammy? All right. Thanks, Tammy. Oversights. Well, since we're all jumbled up, Deb Painter, we'll let you go first, planning and zoning.
We held our planning and zoning meeting on May 27th in person for the first time in a few months. Jeff Harmon of the Becker Morgan Group introduced the concept plan for a Dollar General store to be located at 834 South Main Street, which is the Old Town Girl Gaines property. The plan calls for the demolition of the existing structure and building a new 9,100 square foot store. The sides on the front of the building will have a brick-like appearance, and a brick-based monument sign also included in the plan, which will fit nicely with the shopping center directly across the street. Ms. Tanya O'Neill, owner of Cut Piece CBD at 1154 South Main, presented two sign requests to the commission. The first was a request to put a green LED-lit CBD sign in the rear window of her shop. This type of sign is prohibited in the town code, and the request was not approved. The second request was for a temporary banner to be hung on the garage facing Gil Avenue. Ms. O'Neill brought a letter from the owner of the property allowing the banner, and the size of the banner was allowable in the code. The temporary banner was approved. The commission then had a discussion of the draft copy of Chapter 1 of the 2020 comprehensive plan update. We held a public workshop in February to set the goals and visions for the town for the next 10 years. The pandemic hit, and we didn't meet for two months. The commission agreed with the content of Chapter 1 of the update and had approved the rational revision of the goal of the meeting. We are now working on Chapter 2, and the commission is looking for community input. We've put together a 10-question survey pertaining to what the community would like to see for Hampstead in the next 10 years. Copies are available at Town Hall, or it's on the town website, HampsteadMD.gov. We asked people to fill the survey out and drop off at Town Hall. You can mail it to the town of Hampstead at 1034 South Carroll Street, or scan it, email it to jwhorf@hampsteadmd.gov. We're looking for as much input as possible. And then, in public comments, Steve Rogers for Outlaw Barbecue informed the commission that the planned new building for the restaurant has been canceled. Due to additional work required by the county and fire code and poor initial estimating from the builder, the cost became too much. Steve thanked the commission and the town for their time and assistance in the project for the last two years.
Thank you. Wayne?
Hampstead train station, there'll be no music in the park this year. It's an insurance issue. The train station is not going to be open till we, probably in July. Under the tree commission, we're hoping to get a meeting together soon, and we're planning on a fall tree planting. We may plant a tree this summer. That's all I have.
Nothing about farmers? Are you, Marlene doing it?
Marlene's doing farmers market.
He could do it. I could do it.
You can do it. It's your tradition.
Well.
Councilwoman Duff.
Okey-dokey. And Wayne, feel free to chime in if I don't get something right here. The market opened for its 11th season this past Saturday, and Acting Manager Keith Johnson reported that under the circumstances, it was a very successful opening day. 16 vendors plus the breakfast chefs participated, and all vendors indicated they were very happy with their sales, both pre-orders and walk-up sales. Councilman Thomas counted 502, right, customers that came through. Customers were respectful, for the most part, of both the face mask and the social distancing requests. Craft vendors will be added to the mix next Saturday, and we wanted to thank the staff of the Public Works Department for assisting in the temporary fence placement to assist with entrance and exit customer flow. And just as an aside, I just really want to appreciate the conscientious and serious manner in which the advisory team has responded to the challenges faced this season. While some of the restrictions have not proved to be very popular, we have believed that they are necessary in the interest of public health. So keep up the good work.
Thanks. I was there with Wayne, and everybody pretty much was respectful. And we wish everybody could just walk up like we did before, but, you know, these pesky rules. Hopefully, the governor keeps changing them every week, so hopefully, we're only a week or two from everything coming down and face masks coming off and everybody getting back to normal. But people did come in and did shop, and they bought, and they filled their bags, and then, and there was some impressive arm exercises going on, and then they were out to their cars and off and gone, but they did a great job. Joe?
Parks are open. They look great.
Go out and enjoy them.
Thank you.
That's what I got.
Finally, Dave.
Okay, Carroll County Chapter, Maryland Municipal League, we have two scholarship recipients this year. One is from the town of Hampstead. That's Ms. Megan Parker. And we're going to do some type of ceremony hopefully next month to award that. And we do have another young lady from, her name's Caitlin Conway from Sykesville. She attended Century High, so I'll have something for her as well. May 2020 average water usage so far was 342,000 gallons per day, excuse me, so far it was. June 2020 average water usage so far was 366,000 gallons per day. Rainfall total for May 2020 was 2.2 inches. Rainfall total so far for June 20 is 1.8.
What are you talking about? 400,000 gallons?
Spikes. An average, that's a rolling average. We're having spikes.
I see people filling their pools. I mean, okay, there's nothing unusual. Chief Snyder?
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everybody back. In the month of May, with reference to traffic safety, we issued 24 citations, 171 warnings. Specific selective enforcements conducted three, resulting in three written warnings. Our committee involved included 1,126 property checks in businesses and schools. Serious crime, two domestic assaults were reported, four thefts, and one malicious robbery. Eight adults were taken into custody and one juvenile. With reference to training, several officers have already completed their annual firearm training. The ranges were open to dance and to use those. And on the last page, we'll note that, like so many other people, a lot of our training, a lot of our functions have gone to virtual. System of our traditional training now has been replaced with online formats. That's just the nature of the beast at this point. And that's all I have.
All right. Questions for Dave? All right. Thanks. My report, been having, this is the first week I haven't. the first week I haven't had a mayor's Zoom call, but they've been very helpful, meeting with the other mayors in Carroll County. We had one with Steve Wance and Ed Rothstein, the two of the county commissioners. If we couldn't have more, they'd have an open meetings law. So, but those, you know, that was a good meeting, talking about Main Streets, talking about businesses and everything, and how they're doing, comparing different parts of the county, comparing budgets. We also had a meeting with, a Zoom call with Senator Cardin. It was very much focused on business, not politics, so it was, it was good to hear. All the changes they made to the payroll protection plan, the PPP loans, I think should be well received on Main Street and by every small business as a banker. I mean, that was our focus for basically eight weeks, and we're getting ready to go through the forgiveness. But the extension of time that it applies and the amount of money that you can then apply to utilities and rent and whatnot, instead of an 80-20 split, I believe it's now a 60-40 split, all those are positives for any small business. So, but they've, they've all been time well spent, and, you know, it definitely shows that everybody's going through it, and everybody's getting through it as best we can. One really positive note, and it was amazing how well-received it was, but the little procession slash parade we have, that Deb had a good, you know, she had a hand in promoting and getting started and us putting up a banner to recognize, you know, 2020 graduates, which we'll get to here in a minute. But that was great to see. You know, it didn't replace the Fire Carnival Parade, but it was the longest parade in North Carroll history because it went all the way from the middle of Manchester to the middle of Hampstead, took a right and ended up at the old North Carroll High School. And there was just tons of people out along the street, and it was great to see. Not often you get a parade right down through the middle of your hometown. So, and I saw several teachers there, and, you know, you guys were calling out to them. So lots of parents. Relax and celebrate something that's good. So, you know, my thanks to everybody who had a hand in getting that done. You know, the police department for making it work, and the fire department for joining in, for our staffs for getting up the banners, which have become somewhat of a photo booth. So, you know, the 2020 grads have definitely been handed a shorthand, but hopefully, you know, it's a life lesson, and you won't experience anything like it again. I don't think there's any unfinished business. Under new business, we, we're giving away three scholarships, and the three young ladies who are the winners are here tonight, which is great to see. I guess Ocean's Steady didn't just hold an appeal to you for this week. But the scholarship committee consists of Joe Renahan, myself, and Mary Susan Cunningham, who's a counselor at the, at the high school. Basically, there's criteria to being considered. Applicant first and foremost has got to live in the town of Hampstead. We get several every year that aren't, but, you know, they have a Hampstead zip code, but they don't live in town. Applicant must have demonstrated a need for financial assistance. They must have academic achievement. They must show community and extracurricular involvement. Their letters of recommendation are also weighed in. And I guess most importantly is I look for a well-written essay containing appropriate content that is also professional in appearance. I've had other people, I mean, they have a great thing, and then they give me a messy handwriting application that we can hardly read, and, you know, and it's just like, you know, what kind of impression are you making? So the three young ladies that we're recognizing tonight clearly were worthwhile, worthwhile winners of this and examples of, of strong student and community involvement. So our first winner was Emily, if you want to stand up. You know, normally, if you want to come up to, yeah, come on up. I'll stand six feet away from you. How's that? Normally, I'd shake your hand and all that.
Just do one throw away.
There you go. Virtual shake. Perfect. Good move. So Emily is going to go to University of Maryland, Baltimore County, UMBC, major in biology, next major, science, like it. She ranked 17th in her class on a weighted GPA, 1,100 service hours. So really well done. Dual role, and I think everybody pretty much was dual role between Manchester Valley and Carroll Community College, and a very strong academic record. So Emily, congratulations. And a $1,000 scholarship will be sent to UMBC, where one of my daughters graduated with, so good choice. Here's your little certificate. They all say pretty much the same thing. Town of Hampstead Scholarship Deficit, Emily Hernandez. We are especially proud of Hampstead's young citizens who lead by example and set standards for other young people to follow, especially in these times. Setting high goals and standards for oneself and achieving them is a true inspiration for others. So congratulations. Our second winner is Megan Parker. Have you figured out what she's going to be at elementary at her site?
Oh, I don't know.
It's a good choice to take care of the kids. And she's going to go to Towson University, also 1,100 service hours. So really well done. And her mom sits over here on the, on the town council. But it's, you know, it's really great, the background, you get all these stories and the background and how far you've come. You definitely serve as an inspiration to others. And so we're looking forward to seeing how well you do at Towson University. So, and here's your certificate, and $1,000 will be sent off to, to the university press. Good? All right. Thank you, Megan. And then finally, Shay Horwood. How you doing? Once again, lots of community service, and she ranked sixth weighted in her class. So she's a very strong student. And she's going to Virginia Tech and majoring in veterinary medicine, basically, want to be a vet.
Yes.
And I have a niece who just graduated and is a vet. So I know that's a really high-profile program. And if you get through it, you're going to do very, very well for yourself. So congratulations as well.
Thank you.
Here's your certificate. It's good to inject a little good news and, and recognize these three students for such a great job in their high school careers. And, you know, we've had a lot of good success with this program, and really look forward to seeing what you three ladies bring, bring to the table 10 years from now when you come back. And we'll see you around town. It's just a small town as it is anyway. So congratulations once again. So, business part of the meeting all relates to the ordinances and resolutions of the budget. The first one is adoption of Ordinance 535, which is an ordinance for the levy of taxes for the fiscal year 2021 for the rates that I referenced earlier. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Then we have adoption of Ordinance 536, an ordinance to adopt the annual budget of the town of Hampstead for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30 of 2021. But we need to amend it first. So I would ask for an amendment of the budget for the capital item. All right, Chris. Too many papers. So from the capital budget, to move the $840,000 for system improvements related to the replacing of 1936 pipe, plus the, the corresponding bonded amount from fiscal year 2022 to 2021. Is there a motion to amend? So I motion to adopt the budget for Ordinance 536. I can always count on you for Robert's rules. Is there a second? Okay. Now there's a motion to? Motion to amend, so move. Second to that. Any discussion of the amendment? Roll call. Roll call. All right. Tammy, from afar.
From afar. Councilmember Unglesby?
Here.
No.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
This is just for the amendment, Wayne.
No, no. So, so.
First you got it.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance amended. Now you can go.
Now, who's second in that?
I thought Dave did.
Second.
All right, Dave did. All right, good. Thank you. All right. So, and you're an aye?
I'm an aye.
Aye.
Joe beat you to the punch. He's an aye.
Councilwoman Duff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Aye.
And Councilwoman, I mean.
Good, thank you. And then lastly, is the adoption of, we probably should do this in reverse order next time, but adoption of Resolution 20, 2020-01, that's a mouthful, which is the Resolution Regarding Water Rates, which basically don't change, and they're listed in the ordinance, or in the resolution.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 20, 2001, regulating the Resolution Regarding Water Rates.
Second.
Second. Is there any further discussion of that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Good. Thanks. Budgets are always fun. I'm a numbers geek, so it works out all right for me. All right. And I can't, and I must thank the town staff, you know, Tammy and Cheryl in particular. Cheryl Ryan, our town clerk, does a great job of that, and she takes on more of the budget every single year, and she did a good job of getting it in shape, in spite of all the changes and surprises as we went through the process. So, any public comments? Once, twice, three times, seeing none? I'll just thank CMC, the, the cameras up in the back of the room, and I thank them for coming in yesterday and setting it all up, and for them to remotely record this, this meeting tonight. So our, you know, we thank you for your efforts, and thank you again for coming. And ladies, congratulations again. I hope you have a great summer, and that things start for you like clockwork come September in the next chapter of your life. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.